The meeting will be run as follows. First of all, the advocate will give their presentation. After that, the zoning administrator reports her findings, effects, and any other comments that she has on the application. Next, the planning commissioner will be able to question the advocate. After that, we'll open meeting up for public comment and questions. If you'd like to say something at the meeting, that you stand up the podium here, state your name and address, and direct all input to the chair. Once the public hearing is closed, then we'll have the planning commission if they want to re-own the public hearing or the other corner. After the public hearing is over, the advocate will begin one more opportunity to speak. And the next step, the zoning administrator, will give some options for motions to the planning commission. And final step, the planning commission will act on request. Basically, we'll just have to wait a couple minutes and see if our fourth person shows up. It's very complicated, but it doesn't happen very often, but sometimes it just happens. Nobody has to need self-help.
She was probably caught in the same traffic jam we were all out in the middle of the city. There was a big tire on the 96.
Oh, was there? Okay, that's very specific. Okay. Thank you.
Should I explain about stormwater?
Sure. Sure. While we're waiting, Manette has a few little bit information regarding one of the criteria that we use in our decision-making regarding stormwater. So, go ahead, Manette.
In 2002, Georgetown Township adopted a model ordinance from the Ottawa County at the time it was Drain Commission. They've since changed their names to the Ottawa County Water Resources Commission. But two things, if this will affect, number one, Platts, and number two, any applications for any construction. The procedures for the township is to review all the applications as per zoning, and then to require the stormwater drain permit. And here's the ordinance right here. The permit is required, that's from the Ottawa County Drain Commissioner's office. And they review all the stormwater drain management proposals. The township planning commission reviews for the zoning ordinance. We do not have an engineer on staff. We have no one here in the township that reviews stormwater. So, our procedures are for the planning commission to review site plans or plans for development. And always, the planning commission, when they make motion, will add the stormwater drain permit requirement. So, the procedure will be to address the site plan, and then add a commission approval for stormwater drain. And anybody that has issues with the stormwater management proposal has to deal with the Ottawa County Water Resources Commission. Same thing with Platts. The planning commission reviews preliminary Platts for performance with the zoning ordinance regulations. When the developer comes in for final Platts approval, they go to the township board and they're required to submit to both commission and the Drain Commissioner of the Ottawa County Water Resources. So, the Ottawa County Water Resources is the agency that deals with stormwater drain issues, you know, wetlands issues, and those types of things. The planning commission is going to deal with the zoning ordinance requirements of the zoning ordinance.
And just to clarify on some of that, there's a practical nature to that. Nobody knows what the stormwater retention requirements are until they can find out how much service is paid for built on. So, what we're doing is letting the engineer do their homework first, and they can kind of calculate it out, and then they can show the site plan that they want to submit to us. And then, once they have that, then Ottawa County can do calculations for the drain permit, and they can find out if that works. And that's worked out very well for us in the past. It seems like it's a practical way for the engineering firm to do it, and it's just what we're talking about.
Okay, so, first up is the approval of the agenda.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Cox or by Hevler to approve the agendas presented in discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried.
Actually, the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
The motion.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Cox or by Hevler to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried.
We have no old business, we're one of the new business. First is the layout of the preliminary Platts rolling with the state number six.
Rolling hills.
Good evening. My name is Todd Stigeyn with Exalver and Fair and entertaining. About that being here tonight, developer of rolling hills. This is the sixth and final phase of the Platts located in the southwest portion of development. This will complete the roadway loop around through the Platts approximately 30 miles. This was approved a little over a year ago, was not constructed. Timeframe on preliminary approval was one year, so we're back here for basically renewal of what was approved previously, and there were no changes that made to Platts. And most of those are just...
Manette.
The proposed layout of Phase Six is slightly different from the overall preliminary Platts that was approved in 2004. And the only issues that it had, first of all, this is consistent with master plan. But just to put a note in the minutes, the building envelopes appear to be ordinance requirements, we'll review for exactness at the time a building permit is submitted. Although lots 171, 172, 173, 186, 187, 188, exceed ordinance minimum requirements for size, these lots are much smaller than the other lots. And the minutes will note that this is a situation created by the developer just in case down the road that they should request variances. And they did provide a drawing for a house that would sit on the two of the smaller lots. Other than that, everything needs ordinance requirements.
No, I don't have anything. I think the fact of what Manette said earlier about the Drain Commission and their role in all of this, I think that's a good reminder for all of us, so I think we appreciate that. But in terms of what's presented here, no, I don't see...
Janine?
I have nothing.
Manette?
Can we discuss this earlier?
This time, we'll open meeting up for public comment. Anybody like to speak?
Hi, my name is Steve Guppy of 3173 Holt Mon Drive. I live in a party I own. And I like... What I'd like to discuss, and I think we already discussed it, Manette brought up the wetlands. Back of my home has a wetland which in purchase I knew it.
Can you, can we bring the map back up and show us the results here? So, if we...
Which number is it?
132, which is right next to one, which is right next to, I believe, future... This one up close here, Rob. So, I mean, if you hold up Holt Mon Drive, 132, it's right next to, 202 will be the first of Phase Six. My concern, which I think you already put a clause in a minute ago, was it's about the wetland. Not that they haven't followed the wetland ordinances with the homes that are there, but my home is, I believe it is 23.8 feet from the wetland, 9132. And what I'm hearing from, it was Rob that beat, the next home will be built back further than mine. And I'm okay with it being built back further, but with a wetland, I'm not okay with that we fill in a wetland. So, my yard is like 23 feet long, very short, love the woods, but I'm not going to be okay when we put that house back farther, when we fill in the wet. I did sense a bit was to rich. Just to take a look at the magnitude of the water that comes down through that valley, it's significant, and it's all the houses, 132, 33, 34, all the way down there, experience that. So, that will be a significant change if that happens. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Is there a veil that likes to be? Stigeyn, would you like to adjourn that issue?
Yeah, you can see that we have identified that weapon on that lot through, just that ash area kind of, so we have, we know ability to fill that weapon in, we can't fill it in without permitting, because the van will go to the condo in front of it, so they wouldn't get to hit it. Not sure why Rob that'd be saying the house could be built back perfectly, but we understand there's a weapon there, and it's kind of, it's a mobile zone, so... And then, there are some things that will be happening during the construction. Rear yard drainage will be collected and brought down, you know, into a closed sewer system in the backyard of those lots to the west. So, the grade that receives, the area that drains through there now is going to be less because some of that yard will be picked up and taken away from there. So, some of the intensity and water that's soon back from that swale will not come out in the same after construction.
So, I would say, when he saw the whole building envelope here, you're assuming that that's the envelope that needs a zoning requirement, but then it sounds like wetlands supersede what the township requires.
I wasn't really, if you're speaking to me now, I wasn't really that concerned about where that building envelope is right there. I was more concerned just the statement made by Rob, that as the houses go uphill, they are a few feet back every home up that hill. Mine is a little bit further back than the rest. The statement of it would be back further, which is perfectly fine, as long as it doesn't have a 400 foot back there. It will be good.
Is there anybody else like to speak? Here with the public hearing, Stigeyn, is there anything else you'd like to say? Manette?
Okay, here's your option for motion. If the planning commission determines that the plan is in compliance with township ordinances, would be to adopt the staff report as finding of facts and to recommend to township board to grant, that's a preliminary Platts approval as shown on the drawing dated 1/16/15, on the basis that ordinances have been met, with conditions as noted up above, with the building envelopes being reviewed each time an application comes in, and that the lots as noted before are self-created, each house will have to have 400 square foot attached garage. Sidewalks will be placed at the individual property, by individual property owners, and that all basically for assessment, due to prior decisions that go into that.
Is there a motion, or is there more discussion than planning question?
I would move to adopt the staff report as presented, finding the facts as outlined.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Cox or by Hevler to recommend to township board preliminary Platts approval of rolling states, which is that... Discussion?
Rich?
Nothing. Manette?
Janine?
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried. This time, we've got all of these, and the township board meeting is...
27.
I think we usually sign three and then have 15.
Yep. Sign three and then that gets...
Three is mine, so I'll hold it nicely.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. For Heisenktrup, 1501. 1603 Jurist Johnson.
Heisenktrup.
Great, Chief from Kujie Builders, representing Dr. Ryan Sojow, that's his address. This is basically the same plant you saw probably about 14 months ago. In fact, right there, this cell is building quick enough, so here we are back. I think the only change is probably the way that some of the stormwater stuff was handled. That was all feeling with the trade questioner, that there was no site plan changes.
How many of them was requested? Manette?
Okay, this is exactly like you said, this has already been approved. It's for a $5,312 square foot building, and the special use is for the drive-in window. It's the same plan, this is consistent with the master plan. And they get permission from the road commission, they have their foot-to-foot offset for their driveway, parking calculations comply, plans need to meet the ordinance, and here's what we talked about earlier, if the planning commission always will require the stormwater drain permit to be submitted as a kind of building permit application, and it appears to be all special use standards as well.
Janine? Manette? Rich?
No.
No? This time, we'll open meeting up for public input. Anybody like to speak regarding the special use permit for maybe I, township? Mr. Stigeyn, is there anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Stigeyn? Anything, Manette?
Okay, if the planning commission determines that the standards of the ordinance have been met, the motion for the special use permit would be to adopt the staff report as finding of facts and to approve the special use permit based on the findings that all applicable standards of the ordinance have been met, including both the general, including the general standards in the ordinance and what's to the special use...
Is there a motion?
I would move that, Mr. Chairman, support.
Support. Moved by Mayor Cox or by Hevler to approve the special use permit, excuse me, as presented. Rich?
No special.
Special, nothing, okay.
Janine? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried.
Okay, for the site plan would be to adopt the staff report as finding of facts and to approve the site plan dated 1/27/14, and the elevations as presented, based on the findings that all applicable standards of the ordinance have been met, with the condition that the stormwater drain permit is submitted to the township at the time of building permit application.
Is there a motion, or more discussion?
I'd make that motion, there's support.
Support. Moved by Mayor Cox or by Hevler to approve the site plan as presented. Special? Rich? Nothing. Manette? Janine? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried. You want to sign up all these, and then you are also...
Where do I go with that?
Good. Losinski?
I'm not Stanley Losinski. My name is Jim Riwon, along with the governor of Prossing Drive, and we are also performing at the Grand Valley State, and Dyacy's civilization stands in some interest to purchase 20 acres of land on 22nd Street as identified on the application. Dyacy's intends to construct a student chap on this project to serve the community, particularly students of Grand Valley State University. And I should know the property's location, the university residential district, and church use would require a special maintenance permit. So, Dyacy's engaged in the great architecture, and Metterbell to prepare a special maintenance permit, and joined tonight by Ed Carey and Dyacy's of Grand Valley. I'm also joined by Fred Medda in the great architecture, lead board of Metterbell, and the general secretary, and area extension standards. We're here to answer any questions if we can, regarding the special maintenance permit. We know that there were some questions raised by some of our neighbors regarding the drainage situation on the property, and as Mr. Edgar mentioned earlier, we understand that any grant of the special maintenance permit would be subject to a key, a drainage permit, so we're certainly going to be looking with the planning commissioner and our neighbors to make sure that the stormwater on the site is properly handled. So, with that, follow up.
Thank you. Manette?
Okay, the application is consistent with the master plan, and the, they provide it, they need to provide the building envelope, the... Okay, they need to provide the build dimensions on a separate document, the building dimension. And a note of the plan states that the signage will comply, and lighting will be downward directing, and they did give sign details, but it's not clear to me of the height of the sign, and the ordinance allows a maximum 25 feet, so I'd ask that that be added as a condition approval. The plan also shows a monument located in the front yard, and it's my determination from sections of the ordinance that that monument is allowed because of the following ordinance sections, and I provided that, do you want people to do that or not? Okay. Because it specifically calls on monuments. Okay, parking calculations meet ordinance requirements. The streetscape meets the ordinance, but they're required to have the greenbelt adjacent to their parking lot because their site is adjacent to a residential district. And there are site, there are trees already currently on the site, so they're providing some. And then, the request is to ask the planning commission to determine what they are providing plus what is existing to meet the requirement, and this is by consistent practice of the planning commission, to not require trees to be removed so that they can replace them with different trees. So, planning commission will have to determine that. Okay, again, the stormwater drain permit will be required, and just, again, there was some concerns about this, but the planning commission's procedure is to review and evaluate this based on the zoning ordinance, and then to require that stormwater drain permit be submitted on the basis of their building permit application. The special use standards appear to be met, and elevations are provided. And that's all I have.
Manette?
Um, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Janine? Rich?
No, the fact that, again, that stormwater drain issue, I think that's covered in here, so I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. It's part of the public hearing, we can just show for the record that we received a number of letters from our friends at Grand Valley State University, and if you have a chance to read, read a little bit of you. I don't think we'll read them all aloud, but we'll give Janine just a couple minutes to plan to go on, and then we'll open up for her. I think that'd be important from the audience. Would anybody like to speak? We will both public period, you will need to... Is it Mr. Ravel? Ravel? Yes. Okay. Would you, do you have anything else you'd like to say? Okay, Manette?
Okay, if the planning commission determines that the standards of the ordinance have been met, following the motion offered for the special use permit, to adopt the staff report as finding of facts and to approve the special use permit based on the findings that all applicable standards of the ordinance have been met, including the general standards and the specific standards.
Is there a motion, or more discussion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
There's support.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Cox or by Hevler to approve special use permit, for the tree, 142 avenue. Discussion, Rich? Nothing. Manette? Janine? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried. Is that clear?
Okay, if the planning commission determines that the existing trees along the proposed, along with the proposed trees need the greenbelt requirement, the following motion is offered, to adopt the staff report as finding of facts and to approve the site plan dated 11 March 2015 as presented, based on the findings that all applicable standards of the ordinance have been met, that the findings of the existing trees along with the proposed trees need the greenbelt screening requirement along the north, south, and east property lines, and with the following conditions, approved sign permits must be obtained prior to any sign construction. Stormwater drain permit would be required to be submitted at the time prior to the issuance of a building permit at the time they submit their building permit application. Building dimensions should be provided on a separate document, we don't have that information yet, and the light pole shall not exceed 25 feet height.
Is there a motion regarding the staff plan? So moved. Just more.
Just to give another question, for Gary, whether we allow trees to exist in, and then the initial, were we talking about that, or was that what I... Sorry?
I think it's implied with the motion. I, that's how I...
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Right. No, that's good, thanks, Dan.
Okay.
Moved by Mayor Cox or by Hevler to approve the site plan, with the conditions stated, and with the understanding that the existing trees may remain along with the additional streetscape tree which will be added. Discussion, Rich?
No.
Manette? Janine? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried. You want to come out here, you decided on all these, and you should be all set, you can meet your Drain Commission department.
And Greg, you might want to mention, Dan, that they have to change the site plan dramatically, that they would have to be turned.
This change could be major for my opinion, thinking we have, you know, the staff, because it's major.
to revise the zoning ordinance in multiple sections related to approving authority for site plans. Planning commission had determined that in certain instances, that approval of a straight site plan could be made by the zoning administrator. So, it would be for, you know, any of the straight up types of things, not for site condos, not for PUDs, not for special uses, but for a plain site plan approval, that the ordinance is changed to state that the approval, approving authority would be the zoning administrator in those situations. So, basically... And also, the planning commission made one change, and that was to allow, if you see right here, this is section D that was added, any site plan with the zoning administrator as the approving authority, when the applicant requests it, you let the planning commission, any applicant can say, you know what, I just want to go through the planning commission and have them make some easy determinations. So they also have that option.
Right. It's basically an appeal process for the applicant, to appeal to the ordinance, I think it's gonna happen. Welcome to the meeting up for public comment. Would anybody like to speak regarding this ordinance amendment? Okay, we're all in the public hearing. Manette?
Okay. If the planning commission determines that the ordinance should be revised in this regard, the motion would be to recommend the council board to approve the zoning ordinance amendments as presented.
Is there a motion?
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, with this part.
I think Janine would.
She did it first, okay.
Most of me by Faircliff, support by all eyes. Do you recommend that council board approve the zoning ordinance? Discussion, Rich?
No.
Aye.
It's good.
Manette? All those favoring motions, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye, motion is carried.
Okay. Well, that's all I have, I just wanted to bring anything that's not.
What I'll do is I'll take, see, was it, there's a few people here, yeah, let's see was it anybody else that someone wants to make their little handle, zoning administrator comments, and planning commission. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to cover? Got a question about procedure or anything else? Is this a public comment, sir? Yes, it is.
I'm here regarding the street ordinance, that was proposed last February.
That's how you say it.
I have others in the community, have a few concerns while we are being told, the private on the ordinance allowing us to keep access, there are some aspects that we can learn about. My first area of concern is the requirement of it to be 20 feet from the lot line. For me and many families, it will eliminate their ability to keep access, I don't know how to put it. For the rest, a lot of us, it will require the animal of our backyard, are very close to it. I live in a subdivision, and I have a relatively large backyard, and even for me, it would be very close to the top of the yard. I personally think that's a little ridiculous, considering that the neighborhood dogs don't have a limit to how close they can come to my yard. Last year before, we used to, on any given day, I had at least two dogs roaming through my yard. At one time, my two little ones, two of my kids, were playing in Samma when the overman charged them. My husband and I could grab the kids, and we ran them in, hid in the shed, until the owner could come. My point with that is, my husband and I went out, but I could be, and put a fence between them, because the only way for us to ensure that our yard is safe for our kids was for us to put a fence, because we played, and we did tell them to keep the dog in our yard, but the only way for us to be kind of sure was to do it ourselves. For us to have to put a fence, keep our kids safe, keep everyone else's pets out of our yard, kind of think it's a little ridiculous, we then have to put our animals in the middle of our yard, keep them 20 feet away from our neighbor's yard. The MS, I think, I think, it's just a minimum of five to 10 feet from the lot line. We would request that those ordinance be changed to five feet from the lot line and 20 feet from the neighboring residence, so that those who have sheds that are five feet from the lot line, that are the ordinance, could use those sheds as circles, and that way it would reduce the startup cost for people. The second area of concern is the shortage regarding chickens access to the outdoors. I'm sure Mr. Ray about the eating and time that the chickens must be kept enclosed inside at all times, because that would be humane, inhumane, and my daughter, three-year-old, she always keeps them in the morning, but all the time isn't humane to me. We, so we're, request that the shortage be changed for that, and that the end size be increased to a maximum of 120 per feet. We would also request that maybe change the other chickens, or change the chickens, whose means are allowed to be allowed to free range in the fence and backyard under supervision. Chickens who are allowed to be outside and free range, and be happier and healthier chickens, would be healthier as, that would be a lot of reasons why. Again, I appreciate this ordinance is developed, and that the practice is being used well, so that we can be allowed to keep back in the chicken, but I would ask that it be implemented by the council.
Thank you. Manette, can you, can we rename the address?
My name is Kelly Spudley, K E L A Y, and my last name is S M E V L E Y, and my address is 6730104.
Can you explain to her what type of flexibility we have within published zoning, and what we can do with that as far as dimensions?
Yes, actually, I can, because we just had a conversation about this in the office today, and, I'll pull up some, okay, first of all, this, the notice went out for publication, and that would be April 26th, I think is the date, right?
Right, September 26th, that's correct.
And then, and it will be on the May 20, planning commission meeting, but actually, we talked about, we talked, actually talked about this in the office today, and, I mean, I'll put this one inside. And the determination was made, basically, that chickens are not allowed at all now. And so, with this ordinance, even if we change it, we're making it less restrictive than it currently is, because there's probably not a lot at all now. But we also, along these same lines, to clarify a few things, the way it was initiated, and that is under section 3.4, the keeping of chickens is permitted as an accessory use of all the following are met. And what basically, I think, happened is, a lot of people use model ordinance, remember the planning commission was going to wait for the Michigan State University extension and the MTA to come up with a model ordinance, but it was going to be a while, and everybody wanted the town to hurry, so we took, we took multiple ordinances of all of our neighborhoods surrounding these colonies, and just used those to come up with something to present to the planning commission. You know, and having done that, some other things have come up, like the fire department actually wrote a letter, and there he just had the fires, which he actually made a comment about piglets that, back over a hay lamp, that they do, and so, he's concerned, he doesn't want them closer than, you know, 10 to 20 feet, well, right now it's 10 feet in the ordinance, but more is possible because this could start a house on fire. And so, he's asking to change that to, instead of 10 feet, which is already in the ordinance, to change that to 15 to 20 feet. Well, if you do that, you can't be 20 feet from the, that would be zero, if somebody just had a 40-foot rear yard setback, goes 20 foot from the house, and 20 feet from the rear yard setback is zero. So if you decide to do that, you could decrease that 20 feet to 10 feet, and maybe add the 10 feet to the other 10 feet, so it'd be 20 feet from the house, and just 10 feet from the side lot line. And the determination is that it is less restricted than what normally we have now, because we don't allow them at all. So the other, the other point, as long as we're talking about this, is that the ordinance, and this is due to fire as well, the ordinance says, "The enclosed area where the chickens are kept shall be located within the rear yard as defined by the zoning ordinance." This means the rear yard of the property. But to clarify, so people totally understand that, would be not within the main building or any attached accessory building. The reason for this, again, is fire. A fire just happened recently, where they were in the garage, started the garage on fire, and that was in the, attached to the house. So, just, and that's more of a clarification, just like, as per section 3.4, see, no accessory building, or no accessory usually located close to the 10 feet in any building. So the planning commission determined to increase that from 10 to either 15 or 20, and then decrease to 20 to 10 or 15, whatever the planning commission determines, that that would be okay. It has already been published.
So basically, we do have flexibility to change the ordinance, change what's been advertised, what you're saying.
Right, that was the determination we came up with today.
She would like to say, have a full, have a full 20 feet to the lot line, so we have the flexibility to discuss in the public, what to change if it may be, if we'd like to, or, and we also have the flexibility to allow chickens somewhat free-ranging, you know, whether it's a requirement requirement or something, we also have that flexibility.
Or if you wanted to say, they had the six-foot high privacy fence or something like that, that would keep them in, or something like that.
The other thing too, with our chicken tractors, what they call, you know, it's a movable shed, that they can move around the yard, so it's spread out the waste, throughout their grass and stuff. Does that answer your questions? Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add, Janine, Rich, Adam? Is there anybody else that has anything for the planning commission?
Well, Bible scripture, 7544, North Berry College, and chickens again, but my wife has Omel and was going to talk to you today, but she is sick and can't speak, so I printed copies for everyone, along with her, to just, and that hopefully made it a little more accessible.
Now, we always get it in the result, you know, all of you are welcome to say if all of you want to, but you're, you may also be a student, and you'd like to, so.
Actually, we wanted to stand this new guy right here.
Okay. You want us to just read this and take this for information, and then we can have it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Michael LaShay, nice to hear your word. I just want to thank you guys for coming with the chicken ordinance. I'm happy with that, that's awesome. And I think everything seems pretty fair, I really, the 20-foot, it was the type of question I had, I don't know, you know, probably the reason, but it sounds like there's flexibility, so that's awesome. I think the 80-foot total seems fair, I don't think any bigger, I think if you guys have come up with 40 square foot, which you are doing great, if you've done 100, you are doing 160, I think it's a good start. What I would like to see with that one, though, is some sort of parameters for a total footprint. I don't want to see somebody, say with 120, to have three foot wide, like 40 foot long, because it's just not going to look good. And I think most people who are going to have chickens are going to be consider other neighbors, so that wouldn't happen, and that was the other thing, I do like the screening of that, to be considered other neighbors, and that's one of those things, hopefully people are going to have to have an ordinance, they'll do that out of respect to the neighbors. The other thing, I assume there'll be variances too, for somebody with certain circumstances, if they back up to a wooded area that's, will never be developed, that they can ask for, would that be something you'd get a variance for?
People would accept the rent as.
Yeah, and then is it, would that be something that would be simple, they could come to and not have one front of them, or it's only going to work on a single building, so it'd be pretty expensive. But other than that, I just, I appreciate you guys jumping in, to care, and it's fantastic. It'll be interesting to see how many people actually do the chicken, I think it is pretty expensive, I mean, we're going to do it, so.
And it's not really planning commission credit, I think it's the board that has the planning commission deck on it.
Okay.
I think it's Mr. Faircliff that brought it to us, so we really need to give the board credit, not planning commission credit there.
Absolutely.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
John Kay, 7869, Parkside Court. I do not tend to chickens, but I guess it's not a little bit involved with people doing that, and, and the 80 square feet for the coop seems fine, I don't really know about this, I would think there'd have to be, not free range, like 100 square feet or something that's fenced in, that they could run around in outside of the coop, or I don't think that was in the, at least the way I read the ordinance, I didn't see that, I think there'd be some fenced-in area that, I don't know what the number is, that they would be outside of the coop, that's still contained. I also agree it needs to be, like a 10 by 10 square feet, not 100 feet by 100.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay, Manette, do you have any?
Just wait until you do work on the master plan, unfortunate, unfortunately, it'll be put aside for a little while, because we have quite a few applications coming up for the planning commission meetings, so we'll, you know, kind of hold up on that, but we, I did make some changes to the master plan in regards to what we spoke about at the meeting on April 1st. So as soon as we get a meeting where we don't have a lot of applications that we'll receive with the master plan.
Janine, is it you?
I don't care.
Just one comment relative to chickens that I made, and that is when several people refer to the concept of a coop, and coop is defined as having a place where there's roosting opportunity and nesting boxes, plus an open area where chickens can be outdoors, that's part of that entire, so if you look up the word coop, you'll discover that that is the meaning of the word coop, and so that's how it's used.
Anything else? That's it? Manette? Okay. Janine? Do you have any, the planning commission?